Commissioner Galt. Commissioner Rhodes.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kayler.
Present. Tonight, would Commissioner Abraham, would you do the invocation and Commissioner Wilson, lead our Pledge of Allegiance? Everyone, stand, please.
Lord, thank you for a beautiful day. It has been just that. When we think about how beautiful today is, it would not be as beautiful had we not gone through the weeks prior to. So, we thank you for that. We thank you for each other. We thank you for the opportunity to serve this community. These things we're asking issue in his name. Amen.
Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have any additions or deletions tonight?
Madam Mayor, there are no additions.
Thank you. We have a public hearing tonight for the 2017 property tax rate levy. Who has, don't we have to have an?
I have it.
Okay.
No. She's asking if we have a motion to get into the, but we don't have to have.
Don't have to have a motion.
I want to just launch into an open.
All right, go ahead, John.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. The purpose of this public hearing is to give the public an opportunity to comment on the proposed twenty-five-and-a-half cent real estate tax levy. A hearing is required by the Kentucky Revised Statutes if the proposed tax rate exceeds the compensating rate, which is 25.4 cents this year. Local government is permitted to adjust the tax rate upward by 4% over the compensating rate. If you would, please direct your attention to Chart A. And now, I sent those to you in advance. I brought you extra, just in case you didn't have. Give you a second to get those. I should have done that in advance, and I forgot. I've learned over the years to make these things really big. For me. We've taken the maximum allowed tax only one time in the past 20 years, and I believe that was back in 14. You can take a look at the chart there. It's an interesting little chronology. We typically stay right down the middle. Later in the commission meeting tonight, the proposed tax levy ordinance will be introduced. Staff recommends that you set the city's real estate property tax levy at 25.5 cents, which is the same as it was last year, which makes it 4.5 cents lower than it was in 2001. As shown on the chart headed, which is actually the next one I gave you, upper right-hand corner with a B, you can see all the levies back to 2001, both the cities, the schools, and the junior college rates that we collect. And you can see, if you go to the far right, 2015, 16, and 17, and in fact, 14, the rate has been the same, 25.5 cents. Final reading for the levy ordinance is set for October the 4th. And I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have at this time.
And of course, within that property tax, there are other taxes that are sent out on the tax bill, not just the city.
Correct. The city, we are required to collect for the city school system, the junior college within the city, and of course, the city itself. And that's who we collect for. We don't collect for the county school system, though.
Right. Do we have any questions on the property tax levy? Any comments?
I mean, just the lines are just, is it just?
We don't have.
We have a slide, but you can tell, you can tell the lines. And here's where we were in 1998, and here's where we are today. So, it's rather remarkable. We've reduced taxes.
Haven't raised them, we've reduced them.
You heard it here.
All right. Thank you, John. We have, we have some people here tonight that want to do a presentation, and I'm going to go ahead and do that before we get into our meeting. Patience Ranzouli.
No.
No. I can just do it because I'm the mayor.
And you should.
For those of you who may or may not know, I'm Lee King, and I live here in Lower Town. And I'm sort of a chairperson of the subcommittee related to historic preservation. And back in the early 1980s, some of you probably know this, but the Lower Town Neighborhood Association was organized with the primary goal and objective is of historic preservation. And along with this, and their goal, then the artist relocation program started. And with all of that effort, we had a great deal of the major historic homes that were saved. And we're so pleased with that and hope that they will last for many generations to come. We also wanted to maybe mention the fact, and I wanted to introduce Patience. She's going to be the main speaker of this concerns. But one of the earliest artist locations, relocation, was Bill Ranzouli and his wife, Patience, and their waggle of whippets. Their restored home is located on the corner of 8th and Madison Street. And Patience laughingly tells that the first time they came to look at homes here, this house was in a deplorable state and had a dead possum in the center of a pool of water in their downstairs. But they managed to like this place and, after restoration, moved in. And I think they got rid of the possum. But anyway, Patience walks her whippets on a daily basis to the river. And recently, on one of her walks, she noticed the deterioration of this really fabulous, beautiful, once it was, home that was the home of deceased Louise and Howard Randall. So, she made those pictures, made some pictures of it, put it on the, put them on the Facebook, and I know many of you've seen that. But tonight, she's going to be sharing some of the concerns of the residents here, as well as the Lower Town Neighborhood Association and other concerned citizens. And she's also probably going to give us a little of the historical background of that home. Patience.
Thank you, Lee. I just have some pictures. I did have some short video, but it doesn't work with your system, so it's even a shorter presentation. It won't take long at all. We're talking about the historic home on the corner of 6th and Monroe Streets. It's really on the cusp of Lower Town and Downtown. It started as a two-room cottage before the Civil War. And we are here, we thank you for this opportunity, Mayor Kayler and Commissioners. We are actually, as a neighborhood, coming to you to ask for help. We all know too well that once a building reaches a certain level of disrepair, the cost to restore it becomes prohibitive, and the building is lost forever. Improvements were made to this house in 1879 and again, in 1895, which transformed it into one of Paducah's architectural gems. In addition to being beautiful, it has tremendous historic significance. In 1956, this is a video you all can find on YouTube if you just search, go to YouTube and search for Alvin Barclay funeral. I did have a snippet of the video to show here. There was a huge crowd gathered when Alvin Barclay's remains were laying, lying in state in this house. In the video, you can see the receiving line goes around the block. I could not find an estimate of how many people were there, but it was significant. President Truman, Hubert Humphrey, Adley Stevenson, and others walked through the doors of this home. And I don't know any other gathering in Paducah that would have contained dignitaries of that stature. Today, as you approach the home at first, you see from a distance what is a magnificent, truly breathtaking structure. But as you get closer, you see that this house is crying for help. There are tremendous problems with water leakage, and of course, none of us knows what's going on inside. But the damage is getting to that frightening point where if something isn't done, we're in big trouble. That's the stairway where you just saw President Truman, Adley Stevenson, and Hubert Humphrey standing. The beauty of the place is still evident, but it's more in a dawn of the dead sort of way. When we arrived, when Bill and I arrived in Paducah, this house was magnificent. So much of Lower Town was crumbling and neglected. We were told by city officials and commissioners that this would not happen again, that there were ordinances in place, and that they would be enforced by the city. To see what could possibly be done about this house, we researched the previous owner's will, discovered from court documents that her estate remains unsettled from 2008. We learned from the city manager that currently there are back taxes owed, and that the water is turned off, although neighbors believe someone stays in the home periodically. But this is not why we're asking for the city's help. The question I have to pose to you all as the city, as city officials, as the people that we entrust our city to, is what respect do we owe our ancestors? The bottom line is, do we respect our forebears? Do we owe them due diligence in preserving what they created and left for us? And what responsibility do we have for our descendants? Do we care about what we leave for future generations? We all know from too much experience that if something isn't done, and done very soon, the only way Padukans in the future will be able to see this home is in a picture in a book. And we're begging for your help to ensure that doesn't happen. And thank you. It won't go off.
I remember this house being on the tour of homes for several years.
When Louise was alive.
Yes. I didn't realize it had been that long.
And we have one more person to speak, or? Ann.
This is Ann Gwen of Growth.
Hi, Ann. I'm wearing my Growth hat again tonight. Also wearing my early Lower Town hat, because I was the one that drafted that ordinance. And I remember when there were lots of absentee landlords there that had properties there, and everything was crumbling. It was shambles because people lived, didn't live here. They lived elsewhere, and they rented the properties out, and all they cared about was the money. So, in 1980, that kind of changed, and you've heard the artist relocation piece that went on top of the historic preservation piece. But I'm here tonight with Growth. Growth has long espoused historic preservation as an economic redevelopment tool. It's very difficult to go back into old neighborhoods that haven't been subdivided with a whole lot of planning and forethought. And in the city, we have a lot of older neighborhoods that have no protection. Lower Town does have protection. It has this historic zoning ordinance that says basically that these buildings matter, the built heritage matters. And I think that Patience has given you all a wonderful opportunity to put the teeth behind the ordinance and tell the young man who, for whatever reason, I understand he lives in Clarksville? Clarksville, Tennessee. He's not a, he's not a local. And I understand that he has some issues, but if he hasn't paid his taxes and he hasn't probated this estate, it doesn't seem to me like it has a whole lot of interest in what's good for the neighborhood or what's good for Paducah. Since the city has a lien on the property for its taxes, you could simply direct your, the city attorney or Mr. Key to file title action that would force the sale of the, of the place at the courthouse door. That would bring in, hopefully, a lot of other people who might be interested in renovating it and repairing it. Yes, it's a little bit expensive for the, for the city to take on a lawsuit, but it's a whole lot less expensive, in my opinion, than it would be to enforce the ordinance and get, get that property back as a contributing property to the Lower Town Neighborhood Association. So, that's, I have Growth's unanimous endorsement of the Lower Town Neighborhood Association's request to you all to do something about it. And I do believe that, I don't see the attorneys here tonight, but a simple call to one of your attorneys would probably be all it would take to do things moving in a positive direction. So, I trust you all will take that under advisement.
Yes, we do have more teeth into that, the ordinance, which we certainly can use. We can even, I mean, there can be legal charges brought against him, which could make him serve jail time. So, that is, that is in the ordinance. I've always felt that it was better to try to talk to someone face-to-face first. I would like to try to do that with him. I have met him several times. I knew him when Louise was alive. I might not have any luck with him, but I would like to at least talk to him. I know the city manager and I have talked about it, and we have talked about the foreclosure portion of that. We can do that.
I think the foreclosure one is a whole lot neater and simpler than going through the jail time.
Sure, sure.
Derelict, dereliction of, or neglect, demolition by neglect.
Right.
But in fact, it's a very simple, you're simply asserting your lien for back taxes against the estate, or against the house, which is, you have a lien on the house, along with, I presume, the state of Kentucky that would probably like to get its, we don't know if the, whether the inheritance taxes have been filed. It's been eight years.
It has not.
Well, you know, the, when I was practicing law, it was, two years was a pretty good turnaround for an uncomplicated estate. From the time you probated the will to the time you filed the final settlement, most everything should have been done within, within two years. So, eight years is a long, long time. And I think it's really, it's good, it's a good business, it's a good fiscal responsibility to get that house back on the tax rolls before it gets to be too big of a problem for, you know, for someone to come in and renovate.
And of course, you know, we can't go into the house, but I have been told there was a hole in the roof, that there is water damage in the interior of the house. I don't know, yeah, that's the worst thing for a house. So, I just want you all to know that, you know, we have tools in the toolbox that we can use. We are moving forward on that.
Well, and that's, that's what the request is, that you use those tools, and we recommend that you start with the leased owners, which would be a foreclosure action to regain your taxes on it, and that would force the sale of the property, which would also bring the revenues back to the state of Kentucky, as well as to the city of Paducah.
And you know, we have other properties around town. Neighborhoods are in the same predicament that we are with this house. The only difference with Lower Town is we have that.
You have the protection.
Have, yes. Where other neighbors have to put up with the very same things, you know, with broken windows, with boarded windows, with roofs leaking, with animals living in the houses. And it's very difficult to, to address owners that refuse to do anything, anything.
Well, and I think, as you've said, you have the ordinance in place because of Lower Town's historic designation. I don't know how many pre-Civil War structures are still standing. And certainly, that would have some sense, create a sense of urgency because of the shape that the building is in right now. We're at that cliff edge. And also, I wanted to say, if there's anything that the residents of Lower Town can do to help you, I'm sure the Neighborhood Association would be very happy, and the residents as well. So, anything we can do, we'd like to offer our help with that.
Commissioner.
Well, we have an ordinance on the books that you're referring to. And do we have a date of the last activity that we've had on this, this structure?
We do, yeah.
Well, how long ago was it?
Unfortunately, I don't have Greg here tonight to talk about that.
When I met with the city manager in July.
I can get that information to you.
Well, the point of it is, is that, you know, we have, we have ordinances to deal with what you're talking about. So, we're not enforcing the ordinance. Hence, that's why you're here. And that is, that's, that's, that's a problem as elected officials. We have ordinances to deal with the very thing you're talking about. We haven't dealt with it, and you're here reminding us what we already know. There are other structures in the city. We have, we have a history in this city of absentee landlords collecting rent. Won't fix anything, but want the rent. A person cannot stay in a condemned house. So, when we enforce the ordinance and we have a person living in that house, they have to leave, and it looks like the city is dropping a sledgehammer on, on the renter. But this is something that, that we really need to, if we have the ordinance, let's enforce the ordinance. Now, wherever that goes, we'll see. But it is challenging, like you said, it is challenging. Out of sight, out of mind. Some guy living in Clarksville, living in Houston, has several properties in Paducah. They're not really caring about what's going on in Paducah as long as they're getting that deposit. So, if there's teeth in the, in the ordinance, then we need to, we need to exercise the, the options that we have and, and get it done.
Well, I thank you very, very much for listening and being concerned. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, could I, could I add something to this? Just, Ann's exactly right. Not that this property is by itself. We have a number of parcels that have not paid their property tax, and as standard operating procedure, we do go after them eventually. And so, this one happens to be on the list, and it's already, it's on the potential foreclosure list. And I, again, I can't say specifics that I don't know, but if someone does not pay, it's right then turn over to the attorneys. If they don't pay, then eventually, they end up over at the courthouse. That's where they're going to go. So, that's, that is a good way to wrestle it out. Yeah, we would tend to agree with that.
Yes. Can you come up to the podium, please? Thank you. Did you have something? Did you fill out?
My, my name is Suzie Hoffman, and I live in Lower Town as well. And I don't know if this will add to your ammunition, but I'm also concerned that this beautiful house is falling apart. And two weeks ago, on Saturday night, I passed it and saw a young man, looked like he was in his twenties, entering through the Monroe Street side. So, perhaps there's a squatter in there, and perhaps that would give you another reason to go in. I just thought I'd bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Thank you all for being concerned and being here tonight. All right, we have Commissioner Abraham with the minutes.
I move that the reading of the minutes for the September 20th, 2016 city commission meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second.
City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Ordinance is adoptions. Commissioner Wilson, you have the first one? Oh, no. Municipal orders. Commissioner Rhodes.
Upon the recommendation the city manager of the board of commissioners of the city of Paducah order that personal changes on the attached document be approved.
Second.
Hi, Steve. Any questions for Steve? It's pretty routine. Thank you. City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Okay, now we go to ordinance is adoption. Commissioner Wilson.
I move that the board of commissioners adopt an ordinance, an ordinance of the city of Paducah accepting a 2015-2016 Assistance to Firefighters Matching Grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency for the Paducah Fire Department, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all agreements relating to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah hereby accepts grant funds in the amount of $87,455 through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency for a 2015-2016 Assistance to Firefighters Matching Grant Award for the Fire Ground Survival Program sponsored by the Paducah Fire Department. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a grant agreement in all documents relating to same.
Second.
City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Abraham. You're the next one.
I do. I move that the board of commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of McBride Mac, Inc., for sale to the city of one new 2017 front-loading Refuge Collection chassis and body for use by the Solid Waste Collection System, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah accepts the bid of McBride Mac, Inc., in the amount of $233,119, for sale to the city of one new 2017 front-loading Refuge Collection chassis and body, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Okay, city clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes.
I move that the board of commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of MP Lawson Construction LLC for plumbing renovation of fire station number two, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah accepts the bid of MP Lawson Construction LLC in the amount of $74,787 for plumbing renovations to fire station number two located at 3000 Wayne Sullivan Drive, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Wilson.
I move that the board of commissioners- I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Section 1432 Dogs permitted at Special Community Events, Restrictions of Chapter 14 Animals of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city hereby amends Section 14-32 Dogs permitted at Special Community Events, Restrictions of Chapter 14 Animals of the Paducah Code of Ordinances, to eliminate the requirement that dogs be restrained by an open-ended muzzle at special community events.
Second.
Anybody want to comment before we vote?
Yeah, I do. Last Tuesday, we, it was introduction of this ordinance, and we talked about, um, the logistics of it. We talked about the three-foot lead. We talked about the environment that the animal's in. We talked about pet owners, pet owners' responsibility. So today, we're passing an ordinance to either keep, to amend the ordinance, to, uh, to take out the muzzle part. In between the two commission meetings, BBQ on the River happens. And it was, it was, and I guess it's just great timing because I saw several animals, dogs, at BBQ, stressed the heck out, on a three-feet, or three-foot lead. There's people pressed, and I'm thinking to myself, if we're gonna take away the part of the ordinance that deals with the muzzle, we need to replace it with the language that says, no animals are allowed at city or city permitted events at all. So I go back and I'm thinking, okay, so what was the motive of that part put into the dog? Was it mean-spirited? Of course not. It wasn't mean-spirited at all. As municipal, we're like, we're elected, okay, we want to serve and protect. We got the fire department, we got the police department. Our ordinances are put in place for our citizens. So if we have an ordinance, and a component in that ordinance says that if you're at a city permitted event, your dog needs to be muzzled. The ordinance does not tell you what type of muzzle to put on your dog. That's the responsibility of the pet owner. That's not the job of the ordinance. And maybe people need to be educated on what type of muzzle to put on their animal. But what I saw Saturday, when I was down there, again, I'm a dog owner, I love my dog. And there's no way in heck I'm gonna bring my dog to an event with thousands of people, meat cooking, kids all around. It's just an unpredictable situation. So if we're not gonna replace the language with, uh, no animals at city permitted events, period, then I'm, I'm, I vote to keep the muzzle portion of the ordinance intact.
I think what we need to do tonight is vote on the ordinance. I do think there are some things within this that need to be reworked, definitely. Even here in B, special community events include, but are not limited to, Paducah Summer Festival, which we don't even have anymore. Then we talk about BBQ on the River Parade, Saturday Night After Dinner, which we don't even call it Saturday Night After Dinner anymore. So, you know, that language needs to be cleaned up. And I know right now that when you permit an event, you can say either it's dog-friendly or it's not. And I think BBQ does that, no dogs, when they get their permit. But how do you enforce that, is another thing. Even though it's in their permit, you know, people are, people still bring their dogs down. Maybe they don't know that, even with all the publicity you put out. So, yeah, I think we need to work on this more, definitely. But I think the best thing tonight's just to vote on this, and then we'll get the attorneys involved, and maybe a committee together with it, and decide what we really need to do here.
So why don't we pull it?
I'm sorry?
Why don't we pull the ordinance until we get the ordinance that we want?
And why don't we just vote on it and go on?
Well, we can vote on it, that's fine.
But, but this does, it does say restrained by an open-ended muzzle, instead of a basket muzzle. The open-ended, am I correct, is the one that keeps the dog's mouth closed?
Yeah, yes, that's right. And any responsible dog owner would do that.
You're not supposed to put that kind on your dog.
We're talking about unmuzzled so the dog can pant, so.
No, no, the open-ended keeps their mouth closed, correct?
I think it's confusing.
Mm-hmm. What is open-ended?
There are two.
Muzzle 101.
There are two basic types of muzzles, neither of which are called open-ended. I think the idea was to provide a muzzle that a dog could still pant. And people misinterpreted that and are getting the mesh muzzles because it has no end that hold the dog's mouth closed, so they can't pant. And that is a dangerous situation. The basket muzzles protect from bites, pretty much. But no dog that has not worn a muzzle is going to tolerate a muzzle. That, that takes training, that takes, from, it takes a good deal of training. So if, if you put a muzzle on any dog that hasn't worn them, they're just gonna be freaking out and, and trying to get that off, just like we would if somebody put their hand over our mouth.
So where does, where does that responsibility lie?
So I, I think, oh, of course it lies with the pet owner. But I think you have a provision that says, any festival, any activity can say, no dogs at this activity. And I have to ask you, were the dogs that you saw at BBQ last weekend, were they muzzled?
No.
No.
None that I saw.
So, no. So, and, so, I answered your question.
Well, aren't we really, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, then it's, it's, it's back on, on the municipal. I've heard this several times. How are you gonna police it? Well, these ladies were just here talking about a historical structure in Lower Town. And we have an ordinance on the books. And they're like, enforce the ordinance.
We are.
But this one, is it too, is, what is it? Is, is just all over the map, and it's too, it's too cumbersome? So we're just gonna take that part out because why?
Let me think where I come from. I wanna live in a progressive city, and when I look at places like Portland, Oregon, or Austin, Texas, or Nashville, Tennessee, or just other cities in Kentucky, like Lexington, and they don't have a muzzle. They don't, they talk about vicious dogs, but they don't talk about muzzling your dog when you go to an event. And I think, why is it that we have to, why do we feel we have to have an ordinance when other cities?
So what are you defining, what are you defining as a vicious dog?
Well, there's verbiage for that in the immunity code. I talked to Bill Bartman today, and I said, Bill, does the county have a? No, he said, no, we don't have a, we don't have a muzzle ordinance. All I'm saying is, is it, why do, why does Paducah think it needs to have this extra step when other very progressive cities have opted not to?
Okay, we have an option, and we don't have to have the muzzle. We then, I, I don't think an animal should be in that environment with that many people doing what, what they're doing and stressing the dog out. I mean, again, I love animals, I love my dog. And I, as, as a pet owner, I can't see putting him in that environment and expecting everybody to know dog etiquette. Blue's a great dog, but he's territorial.
Wouldn't that be the next step, after this was what you're talking about?
Well, we'll see.
As I said, I do think we need to work on this more. And just, just to make a blanket, you know, no dogs at any festival. What about dog festivals?
Well, of course, if you have a, if you have a specific event, if it's a dog event.
Only cats can come to those. No, I'm just being silly.
I mean, we have events where dogs, folks, you know, dress up their animal, dress up their dog.
That's why I said dog-friendly events. We can, you know, and we don't have that in here.
And you can put that word in there.
That can be dog-friendly.
But this isn't what we're talking about, though.
Right. We're talking about whether they're muzzled or not at dog-friendly events. Right? I mean, if it's a dog-friendly event, does that mean with a muzzle or without?
If we have an event for snakes, bring your snake. If we have an event for dogs, if you wanna bring your dogs, then bring your dogs. Then we can, you don't have to be muzzled for that.
But there are people and children at dog-friendly events, and the dogs are there without muzzles. I mean, like the costume contest with the dogs. And it's a great event that we've had for the last four years at Stuart Nelson Park. We don't require muzzles there. Or they're, they're, they don't wear them there, let's put it that way. Muzzles aren't worn, just the costumes.
Okay.
Anyway, City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
I vote to keep the muzzle, so that, I guess that would be a no.
No to amend the ordinance, yes. You're voting yes or no to amend the ordinance?
Yes, correct.
Yes, correct. No is correct.
Yes, we're gonna amend the ordinance to, to take away that regulation. If you vote no, that means the ordinance stays like it is.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm up on what I'm voting on.
Okay, so you're voting no.
Correct.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Kahler.
Yes. Okay, we have some ordinances for introduction, Commissioner Abraham.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance fixing the levies and rates of taxation on all property in the city of Paducah, Kentucky, subject to taxation for municipal purposes and for school purposes for the period from July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017, with the purposes of said taxes hereunder defined. On the left side of the sheet is the purpose, on the right side is the rate per hundred dollars. Under general fund of the city, real property, .255. Personal properties, 0.390. Motor vehicle, watercraft, 0.390. Under school purposes, Paducah Junior College, 0.017. Real estate, I'm sorry, under Paducah Junior College, real estate, 0.017. Personal property, 0.017. Motor vehicle, watercraft, 0.031. The city of Paducah shall collect the following taxes for the Board of Education. This is Paducah Independent School District. Real property, 0.799. Personal property, 0.799. Inventory, 0.799. Total tax rate per hundred dollars real property, 1.071. Total tax rate per 100 personal property, 1.206. Total tax rate per hundred dollars inventory, 0.799. Total tax rate per hundred dollars motor craft, water, motor vehicle and watercraft, 0.421. Property taxes levered herein shall be due and payable in the following manner. In the case of tax bills which reflect an amount due of less than $650, the payment shall be due on November 1st, 2016, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until November 30th, 2016. In the case of all other tax bills, payments shall be made in accordance with the following provisions. The first half payment shall be due on November 1st, 2016, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until November 30th, 2016. The second half payment shall be due on February 1st, 2017, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until February 28th, 2017.
Second.
You got to read that.
I did.
Any questions for John? Thank you. Commissioner Rhodes, you have the next one.
Yes ma'am. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving a grant agreement with the National Endowment for the Arts for an Arts Engagement in America Communities Program Award for the installation of a branded, right, a branded wayfinding signage, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all necessary documents related to the grant. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the city of Paducah hereby approves a grant agreement with the National Endowment for the Arts to obtain an Arts Engagement in American Communities Program Award in the amount of $10,000 for the installation of brand wayfinding signage for Paducah's Downtown and Lower Town Arts District. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized and execute the agreement and all documents related to the grant.
Second.
Good evening.
Aye.
That was a pretty good description. Obviously, we've gotten a $10,000 grant award from the National Endowment for Arts for a branded wayfinding system. We'll be looking at the downtown area and lower town area and trying to come up with really a palette of signs for both pedestrian-oriented signs. And those would be the smaller signs that, as you're walking from one place to another, you'll be able to look at those signs that can direct you to either cultural or artistic attractions with our community. But as part of this also, we wanna, as I mentioned earlier, we wanna come up with a palette so everything is uniform, the style, the color, those types of things, for also future audio-oriented signs. As you're driving through our community, it can point you in the direction of the Performing Arts Center or something like that. So with, with the receipt of this grant, the next step is we'll start to work on that palette of signs that we want, and also be looking at the location and what it is that we want to direct people to within our community.
Well, I just wanna make a comment that, you know, this, this really is a result of the community trip to DC when we met with the National Endowment for the Arts. He.
Yes ma'am.
Wanted to come to Paducah because he felt like we should have more arts organizations applying for grants from NEA. Came to Paducah and really fell in love with our city and wanted to do something to spur on a relationship with the National Endowment for the Grant, for the Arts. So I'm really pleased to see that this is moving forward, and it's a great opportunity for us to start part of the ramp, really, through wayfinding. So thank you all for taking that time to make the application. I know you've also done another one for the Our Town Grant, which is much larger. But this is a really nice start for us with the National Endowment for the Arts.
Yeah, and you spoke of the ramp, really, it's, it's that connection between the Lower Town Arts District, the riverfront and the riverfront improvements, and then our Downtown Art District, and how to get people to move from one area to the other seamlessly.
Now remember, we did not adopt the ramp.
Yes, I remember that.
The city accepted it.
Yes.
It was not adopted because it had many flaws.
Well, I think.
Wayfinding wasn't one of them, though, was it? I mean, signage to help direct people around?
I haven't dug back into it, but, but I, the question I was gonna ask is, is the $20,000, is this for buying signs or for doing sort of the design work?
There'll be a very small portion of that being for design work. Most of it will be actually for the purchase of those signs. So we can, once again, it's those, I know you referenced the ramp. I, I think, to me, it makes obvious sense that you need to connect Lower Town, Downtown, and the riverfront for the tourists that come to our community.
I agree with that, but the ramp was not necessarily universally appreciated. And sometimes when we refer to the ramp, we, we give it a bigger status than it had. And, you know, you can talk to me here, to Kathy Garcia, on the, on the planning board.
Well, I don't think that this was adopted specifically for that purpose, Commissioner Rhodes. It was a grant to our community, and the $10,000 matching actually came from the state, from the Kentucky Arts Council. So it wasn't anything to get into that part, it was to improve signage in our city.
I just wanna make sure that we, that we know that, that sometimes I think we, we tend to amplify the ramp.
It was not intended for that purpose at all.
Okay, that's.
It was improvements to our city for signage.
And Steve knows I've been talking about this all.
It was not intended for that.
Right. And I'd agree with that, I just, I just wanna make sure we have the ramp kind of in perspective.
It was not intended for that. It was intended for improve our signage, to link them together.
Keeping those, keeping the rapport with our friends in DC.
It was absolutely to accept a gift from the National Endowment for the Arts that wanted to come down here.
Those trips are important.
He really fell in love with our city.
Exactly, I'm only speaking about.
It was not intended for that.
Right. I'm all about taking free money, believe me.
In fact, all of it was. I mean, it was, it's state money that we had received as a grant that we were able to use for matching funds.
And there was an additional five thousand that has already been put aside from another grant that would be used for this. Total, we have twenty-five thousand to go out. And once again, there will be a small amount used for design services. I think it's very important that we plan, not only for this initial pedestrian-oriented signs, but in the future, we have a design palette that everybody agrees and likes when we start purchasing these initial signs.
So this is, uh, state and federal money?
Yeah.
So, in essence, this is, this money that we're getting for these signs, or money that, uh, our taxpayers, it's their money, it's their signs, um, so it's-
If we weren't getting it, someone else would be. So, we should be getting our fair share.
Exactly. So it's not like, um-
It's got our pork.
It, it's not like we're, we're getting some big gift. It's, it's our money. So, we need those signs to enhance our city.
Absolutely.
So can we get our share to do what we need to do here? Absolutely. And if you go to lobby for that, go for it.
Take our share.
That's it.
But, on, on another note, I do understand what you're talking about, yes. But we're so happy to have this.
Yes, we're happy.
Yes. All right. Commissioner Wilson, you have the next one?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance conditionally granting and approving the WB Sanders Retirement Center and Jackson House Apartments Property Assessment and Reassessment Moratorium for City of Paducah Taxes and authorizing the Director of Planning to administer the moratorium. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the City, to grant and approve the WB Sanders Retirement Center and Jackson House Apartments Property Assessment and Reassessment Moratorium pursuant to KRS ninety-nine point five ninety-five through ninety-nine point six oh five and KRS one thirty-two point four fifty-two, provided certain conditions are fully satisfied by the occupant owner in order to encourage the repair, rehabilitation, rest, restoration, or stabilization of existing residential buildings generally known as the Jackson House Apartments and the WB Sanders Retirement Center located at three hundred and three oh one South Ninth Street, Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky.
Second?
Steve?
Yes, the WB Sanders and Jackson House are, are preparing to make a substantial investment within their properties.
What is it? Is it three and a half and eleven million?
Yes, it's three and a half for WB Sanders and, uh, probably in excess of eleven million for Jackson House. Um, a, at a meeting we had several months ago, they requested that the City pass an ordinance to allow for the assessment and a post-assessment moratorium, uh, per KRS ninety-nine six, uh, actually ninety-nine point five nine through ninety-nine six. And the way that works, uh, quickly is, is that, uh, after the application is made, uh, the City of Paducah requests that the Property Evaluation Administration Office do a pre-assessment. They'll go out there and assess the, the, the property at the value of it is right now before the improvements to the property. Uh, they have approximately two years to get the work done that they proposed to do, the eleven and a half, their eleven million and the three point five million. After that two years is up, um, at that point, a five-year moratorium or freeze on that initial assessment happens. Uh, after five years at that point, the PVA will go back out, do a reassessment of the property, and then the assessment will be for the full value, including the construction cost, uh, the fourteen or so million. So it is an assessment, uh, from the, from, from today's date, uh, then a post-assessment after the construction happens.
So with the two years, uh, construction time, they really have, I mean, there's like seven years, the taxes, the stuff.
That's correct. They have up to two years to complete that.
Right. I think everybody understands that. Thank you. Commissioner Abraham, you have the next one.
I do. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of one aerial bucket truck for use by the Engineering Public Works Department Maintenance Division and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby authorize the Financial Director to pay the total sum of one hundred and six thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars to Alec, Altech, Inc., for the purchase of one twenty-sixteen Ford chassis with the Altech Model AT37G, telescoping aerial device for use by the Engineering Public Works Department Maintenance Division, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
All right.
I need a second.
Second.
Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor Commission. This is a replacement truck for, uh, an existing bucket truck that we have that's a lot larger than what we need and with its current, uh, it's about seven, eight years old. It's given a lot of mechanical difficulties that, and, uh, quite frankly, we just don't need that truck and we will auction that truck off and this, uh, the truck that we are buying is something that is more suited to our needs because we're not, like Paducah Power, we don't need that large truck, uh, for our needs. Uh, it's, uh, the truck that we'll be buying is something more like what you see the cable company that uses, uh, for our use.
One-ton chassis?
Yeah, yeah, smaller, a lot smaller.
So is this what we would call a commodity?
I'm not sure. Commissioner Rhodes?
I'm just pulling your line.
Collated truck?
Yes. It is a truck, yes, ma'am.
When we talk about commodities, I, I, we're talking about, you know, whether it's rock or, you know, fuel or whatever. So this is just at the other end of that scale of commodities?
I got you.
Okay.
Not like street lighting.
Okay. Commissioner Rhodes, you have the next one?
All right. Okay. It says, "I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance declaring flood wall remnants as surplus property and approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a plat and quitclaim deeds to the current property owners adjoining the surplus property for economic development purposes." This ordinance is from, summarizes as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah execute a plat and quitclaim deeds to quitclaim the surplus property to the current landowners of the parent tract from which the surplus property was carved, without consideration for purposes of economic development.
Second.
Mayor Commission, this particular piece of, uh, right-of-way that we're quitclaiming is out near Exit Eleven. It's associated with the flood wall back in the thirties, uh, when the city went out and acquired, uh, right-of-way as we were required to do for the flood wall's construction. There was actually a railroad out there that was abandoned and, uh, all the, uh, railroad itself has been abandoned, but there's a portion of it, and there's a little appendage that is on the husband's roadside that actually protrudes into a piece of property that's been currently developed, uh, on the protected side. And then also, same is true on the riverside and it's just, it's right-of-way that we don't need. And as that plat came across, uh, my desk, I'm like going, this is an appendage that's not needed, would be better used in the hands of a developer. So, as a result of that, we're just cleaning up. It's just some housekeeping and cleaning up some right-of-way through there. It's not anything we'd ever need. Actually, it exposes us to, if something were to happen there, the fact that we own it, it exposes us.
Okay.
Suppose we get to introduce the word quitclaim. It's not quick claim, it's quitclaim. Well, you-
Thank you for that nugget. All right. Are you on your way home? And you have a few minutes after the meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. John, do you have a city manager's report tonight?
No, ma'am, I do not. Oh, darn.
Any commissioners' comments tonight?
I don't have any.
All right. Any public comments? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.